Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the New Bedford City Council Chamber. It is Wednesday, May 9th, and we're here tonight for the special city council meeting for the budget presentation. It is 7:48 PM, and yes, we are starting a little early. To those who are watching at home, unfortunately, the mayor was delayed in traffic. Thank you all for your patience tonight. We appreciate it. We don't have a member of the clergy with us tonight, so I would ask you, please, if you would all please bow your head and take a moment of silence for whatever your personal intention is. And as always, please keep those who serve us in our military, both past and present, in your thoughts. Thank you. We're led tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance by the Council of Ward 5, Scott Lima.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor. I am joined tonight in the council chamber by my colleagues in government, Councilor-at-Large Ian Abrew, Council Ward 2 Maria Giesta, Council Ward 5 Scott Lemar, Council Ward 1 Brad Markey, Councilor-at-Large Brian Gomes, Councilor Ward 6 and First Vice President Joseph Lopes, Councilor-at-Large Naomi Carney, Councilor-at-Large Deborah Coelho, and Council Ward 4 Dana Ribeiro. Thank you all for being here. I'll begin by asking the clerk if we have anything to read into the record tonight?
Madam President, we do not.
Very good. So we'll begin, please, with the first communication.
Madam President, item 1 is a communication from Council President Morad and City Clerk Farias requesting that a special city council meeting be called for Wednesday, May 9th, 2018, at 7:00 PM for the submittal of the FY19 City of New Bedford budget.
Motion received and placed on file will be appropriate. Made by Councilor Coelho, second by Councilor Giesta. Any discussion on the item before us? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. Colleagues, at this point, I would ask Councilors Markey and Ribeiro if they would please go to the third floor and escort the mayor in for the budget presentation. We'll take a brief recess, please, while we have that happen. We're back in session. Councilor Markey, Councilor Ribeiro?
Madam President, the question is, if you will be able to answer that question?
All right, you've waited long enough. Sit down, sit down. Sit down, sit down.
Good evening, John. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, and honorable members of the city council, department heads, invited guests, and residents of New Bedford. Let me preface my remarks with an expression of my gratitude for your patience. This meeting was supposed to have started at 7:00, and, you know, allotting 2 hours and 15 minutes to get back was about an hour short of what I needed, unfortunately. But I'm pleased to report that the team in Bedford that presented to the National League of Cities on our opioid efforts here will stand us in good stead as we pursue a pretty significant grant from them to serve those purposes. So, all that said, I figured you needed an explanation for that, and again, I appreciate your patience. And I am pleased here to appear before you to present the municipal budget for the city for the fiscal year 2019. So this year's budget builds on the collaborative process between the council and my administration that started a few years ago. And our collective work has been grounded in our recognition that the city must continue to steer itself through rough financial waters, which requires a deliberate approach by both branches of municipal government to develop a budget that is aimed squarely at long-term stability. We're here not just to talk about next year in effect, but next year and the year after and five years down the line. We in New Bedford have been living through a period of tight finances, in part because of past neglect and inadequate planning. There are hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred building and road maintenance, retiree benefit obligations that are unwieldy because they weren't funded adequately, and underinvestment in schools and basic services. Like it or not, we have to deal with it, and we've done a pretty good job so far in catching up. I say "we," the collective we, the council and the administration together. But what makes it harder for us is that in Massachusetts, cities and towns wield far less control over their finances than their counterparts in other states, at least many of them. Approximately three-quarters of our general fund budget this year is predetermined by state mandates and regional assessments. When you set aside the public safety department budgets, which are driven in large part by a labor arbitration system that puts municipalities at a severe disadvantage, nearly 30 non-public safety departments split the remaining 13% of the total budget. So when you think about all the departments in city government, just about all of them fit into that last 13%. So it cuts to many of these small departments, which can cripple the delivery of important services, but yield little in the way of overall budget savings. Meanwhile, revenue to the city has not kept pace with rising costs. Unrestricted state aid has remained relatively flat, and the ongoing expansion of our local economy has not translated into sufficient new revenue from property taxes. And here lies the seeming paradox. The city's doing very well. Everybody recognizes it. The city's making progress on so many fronts, and yet we have this very, very constrained fiscal situation that persists. So we've made sacrifices, as we must. Over the last few years, certain city departments have been cut to the point where their ability to function is being compromised, and taxpayers, of course, have been imposed upon too. And city government has shrunk. Today, there are over 200 fewer positions paid for out of the general fund than there were in 2001. 200, over 200. So when you hear people assert that city government has loaded up on employees, you can tell those folks it's actually quite the opposite. And even though the workforce has shrunk on the city side, compensation costs have gone up because of the rise, a very steep rise, in benefit costs. In the long run, neither indiscriminate program cuts nor reflexive tax increases will lead to long-term financial stability. We've achieved tremendous efficiencies in city government, but efficiencies can only take you so far. As you've heard me say before, and I'll say it again because it's a really good example, if we want to keep a library in a particular neighborhood, pick any neighborhood where a library is, there's no getting around the fact that it has to be staffed with a librarian. You can't downsize the position away and still have a functioning library. On the other hand, we can't continue to ask more of taxpayers and expect that the city's budget decisions won't materially affect the quality of life or the competitive of our residents or the competitiveness of our businesses. Achieving sustainability by balancing these competing interests requires thoughtful and often difficult decisions, which must be explained to the public with candor and clarity. And the issue, again, is it just doesn't feel like things are tight, right? In other words, we see the tax bills, that surely is a reflection of tight budgets, but when you see the progress of the city, it doesn't convey that there is a crisis, and there isn't a crisis. But it is akin to Aesop's fable of the fish and the boiling water. Sooner or later, we're going to feel it in a big way, and we don't want to get to the point where we have to take drastic action. So this budget will sound very similar to budgets that you've heard before, and it's for all those reasons. Because of the growth of nondiscretionary spending, it is a fairly static budget. There are no grand expansions of services, or no broad initiatives, nothing terribly new about it. And it's not that there aren't good ideas to be acted on, there aren't things that we've all talked about over time that might make a lot of sense for the city to be doing and investing in. It's just that, right now, the city can't afford it. The constraints don't afford us the ability to try these new things unless they, if they, in fact, cost money. So for the record, the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget totals approximately $378 million, of which the general fund, of course, is the single largest component, and that totals $338 million this year. The general fund budget received a $6 million increase in state funding, which consists largely of additional support for the school department, most of that under the Chapter 70 program. So this year's budget is marked by considerable restraint in spending. There's virtually no other additional spending in those areas over which city government exercises more or less full discretion, and again, that's a very small sliver of the pie, this pie, as you can see here. That's the 13% that we're talking about. We're all familiar with this pie chart at this point. And the problem is with what we can't control. What's driving spending, indeed what is crowding out, basic services and putting increased pressure on taxpayers are obligations that are dictated largely, if not entirely, by state policy. Not municipal policy, but by state policy. So, as you can see right over here, and this is another chart that the council is familiar with, if you look over on the right at the growth in the Consumer Price Index, or the growth in the cost of living, according to the Consumer Price Index from fiscal year 2012 till now, it's gone up by about 8.8%. Compare that with the growth in health insurance and pension costs, which come in at 25.1% and 29.5% respectively. That's unsustainable. That is crowding out other things, and we need to do everything we can within our power, including advocating at the state level, to address it. So let me go into a little bit of detail about that. So first, the growth of employee healthcare benefits costs continue to grow. Medical claims have increased significantly over the last few years, and there's no reason to believe that trend won't continue. Healthcare costs are very volatile. The overall long-term trend is ever upward. Second, the city's pension assessment will increase by approximately $1 million as the city continues to meet its funding obligations to the Regional Retirement Board. Pension eligibility and benefit levels, as you know, again, are dictated by state policy. And just yesterday, there was a piece in the Wall Street Journal that highlighted the fact that there are many cities that are feeling especially constrained now because the rates of return that are built into the prefunding estimates for pensions are being lowered by the rating agencies. And so that's going to require us, in the long run, to come up with more money, and that's why, and that's what's happened over the last few years. Third, charter school obligations continue to divert a growing share of funding away from the public school system. Period. The growth in the city's obligation toward charter schools is exacerbated by the state's failure to meet its statutory obligation to partially reimburse localities' costs. As a result, the city's net obligation will increase from $12 million last year to nearly $14 million in FY15. And again, you can see the growth there. And again, this is an area where we get our marching orders from Boston. The charters are state-issued charters, and charter school policy is largely informed by the finances and the financial constraints, or lack thereof, in cities like Boston and Cambridge, where they can afford to allow lots of charter schools in and not really feel it in their budgets. Much of the rest of the state, including New Bedford, feels it big time. Spending in our schools will increase some 5% or $6.1 million, but that is largely, if though not entirely, supported by a boost in state aid. The gap has grown a little bit because state aid has not kept up entirely. While the school budget is set at the state-mandated net school spending level and certain areas require more support still in our school department, we were able to fund important areas that will accelerate the reform effort, including the expansion of instructional technology, as well as the addition of ELL teachers and long-overdue repairs to school facilities. The school department is doing a much better job in keeping up its facilities as it must. It is also worth noting one item that isn't creating significant budget pressure, and in contrast to these things, but that is the subject of considerable discussion of late, and that is the debt service on our annual capital projects. The reason is that interest rates remain low and the projects themselves are relatively modest. Some of the projects will be very visible to the public, of course, like road projects. Others, like the repairing of a roof or an HVAC system, won't be noticed by too many people. But they all need to get done, or else we'll have more expensive problems on our hands, including right in this very building. For far too long, the city has punted when it came to spend money on maintenance, but this council and this administration together have held our responsibility to take better care of our public assets, and we just simply need to continue to do that. So how do we achieve our primary goals as a city, especially when it comes to spending money, which are to continue to provide first-rate services to our residents, which they deserve, it's their tax dollars after all, as we all know, to restrain the demands placed on those taxpayers, as those demands have grown over the last few years, and to support the city's steady growth through key investments, including in infrastructure and schools. So I believe there are essentially five elements to the strategy over at least the next couple of years, if not beyond. So the first is that our budgets must be restrained. Just state the obvious, that has to be our marching orders. For those of you who have been on the council for a while, you'll remember the days when an administration would load up on new spending and propose it all to you in the hope that the council would somehow end up in the middle, that the council would chop away, and then there would be a buffer of sorts, and that the administration would get what it wanted. There's an understandable pragmatism to that approach, but when the budget is as tight as it has been, I believe it is not the right way to go. In my view, the public interest dictates that the administration clearly identify new spending and explain why it is being proposed, and you will be hearing from our department heads, and you will hear all of it. This year, a meager amount of new discretionary spending is being proposed, and only on one of two grounds. First, that it will actually save the city money in the long run, or that it will lead ultimately to more revenue. In the course of the council's budget hearings, you'll have a chance, again, to dig into these details to see what I mean, but I want to highlight a couple of things. The new budget proposes the addition of one position to the solicitor's office. Now, you might hasten to ask, why, under our current financial conditions, would we add more lawyers? And I would submit, not that this would ever be a popular thing to do, to add more lawyers, I get it, as a recovering lawyer myself, I would submit, though, that a city solicitor's office that has the capacity to provide sound legal advice to city government and its employees, and to adequately field all the legal work that comes the city's way, and there's a lot of it, with 3,000 employees here, there's a lot of it, if they can do that, it will reduce our exposure to lawsuits and thereby, in the long run, save the city money. And I think we're at the point where we do need to add capacity. A proposal like this, of course, I get it, it doesn't carry broad public appeal, but these are the things that we have to think about. And similarly, I proposed a mid-level position in the planning department. To accelerate real estate development and expand the tax base, we need more capacity in planning to work through zoning issues and to facilitate the sale of public property. We've talked a lot about that, of course, as well. There are some opportunities there to move properties onto the tax rolls, but you need people to write the RFPs and to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the neighborhoods where these properties exist, and that takes work. And we simply need more bodies in the planning department. So this is hardly ambitious spending. There are other things in there that are legally required. You'll see, we'll go through it, Ari can flag them for you, the department heads can flag them for you. Some of them are things like extending software licenses. These are things that we just have to do. But it's peanuts in the overall budget. And even at that, it's all geared to providing nothing more than basic government services. The one significant exception to all of this, to this entire approach, of adding only where it will lead to savings or more revenue, or just to continue to provide things that we're required to provide, is a proposal to absorb 21 firefighter positions that had been funded and continue to be funded, at least for the time being, by the federal SAFER grant. As you recall, the federal SAFER grant originally funded 70 firefighter positions. Through three successive grant rounds, and we worked very hard with our federal partners to make the case to get those grants, and we succeeded, the city has slowly weaned itself from its reliance on the SAFER grant to staff the fire department, knowing full well, of course, that the federal funding will not be there in perpetuity. By incrementally moving firefighters to the general fund payroll, we have succeeded in maintaining public safety services and haven't laid off a single firefighter. If you told me that that was going to be the case five years ago, I would have been surprised. However, it has come at considerable expense to the city, as the fire department's budget has increased by nearly 30% in the last four years. This year, we will continue to move firefighters to the general fund, and the fire department, again, will see a significant and disproportionate increase in its budget. Having been one of the few cities in the country to secure three successive grants from the SAFER program, and given that the SAFER program has completely changed the rules that would apply to us, it is unrealistic to expect that we're going to get more money out of that fund. So we are continuing the effort to gradually come in for a soft landing with the fire department, but know that it is not easy. Secondly, the second element to our approach, the most pressing challenge, again, this bears emphasizing, involves the city's healthcare and pension costs. If left unchecked, they will crowd out the stuff that we all cherish and the set of services that we provide our residents. By now, we are well aware that these areas are, again, controlled by state policy. The state provides us with no ability to change pension eligibility or benefits, and makes it practically impossible to change the city's share of employee premiums, as folks in the private sector routinely do. As healthcare costs rise, so, of course, does the city's massive OPEB liability. But we have to do whatever we can to stem the growth of these costs. And as we all know, the council has before it a proposal to adopt Sections 21 to 23 of the Municipal Healthcare Reform Act, which confers upon a municipality the authority to seek arbitration if it cannot come to an agreement with its public employee unions over the terms of their healthcare coverage. Most of the communities around the state, as you know, have done it already, including Fall River and virtually all the communities in southern Bristol County. These communities recognize that this was, short of downsizing their workforces, the only, the only realistic means available to control rising healthcare costs. While it is true that the council is not required, of course, to vote on Section 21 in the midst of the budget or before the budget, I grant you that is not required, as our city's employee health plans are based, because the plans are not based on fiscal year, they're based on the calendar year. Nevertheless, I believe that the council must not wait long before taking up this matter so that we can address the rise of healthcare costs. We have to, we can't run away from this issue. The third imperative, it seems to me, is, and I mentioned it before, is advocacy at the state level. That has to happen. We are experiencing, here in New Bedford and a number of other cities around the state, experienced things, went from a fiscal standpoint very, very differently from greater Boston, where tax revenues are flush, where there is an enormous and growing commercial tax base. They have it very differently, and what happens in Boston tends to shape state policy far more than we can ordinarily. So we have to work a lot harder to effect policy change. So it is incumbent upon us to speak up through our state delegation and to the Baker administration, especially now, and frankly, in an election year. But we can't stand silent, and we have to bind with other communities that are feeling the same pinch. And we will continue to do that. We've been doing that, we will continue to pound away at that. Fourth, again, we have to become more efficient. There's just no sort of sitting back and assuming that we've become efficient enough, even though we've achieved a lot in the way of our efficiency reforms. Those reforms have helped us to restrain spending and have ensured accountability and promoted transparency in city government. Now, the list of things that we have been able to accomplish together with the city council's support is long, and you're familiar with it. The Performance Measurement Initiative, the solar energy program, the Voice Over Internet Protocol Service, payroll modernization, targeted organization of city government, all these things and lots more, and these have made a really big difference. But I firmly believe that despite all these efficiency measures, we need to continue to take a hard look at everything we do, because we don't want to leave anything behind. New Bedford should, because it deserves it, our residents deserve it, for us to have the most efficiently-run city government in the entire state. That's our goal. We owe it to them. So we have brought in recently, we brought in just this last year, a management consultant, and I've talked to most, if not all, the councilors about this, to analyze how our public works agencies are doing and to see if there's anything that we can do better. And this was a very useful exercise. It told us first that, first of all, that our public works agencies are effective at their missions and efficient with taxpayer dollars. And our employees in those departments deserve that validation, and it is important for the public to hear that too, so everybody can have confidence that their taxpayer dollars are actually being put to gainful work. It's good to have someone come in from the outside and tell you, you know, with a straight face, what you're doing well and what you can improve on. So on the other side of the ledger, that report did identify a number of areas of redress, you know, and some were easy fixes, just administrative changes. The most significant recommendation had to do with the management of the municipal fleet, and the reforms that we've begun to implement there will save, we believe, more money in the budget year over year than the cost of doing the report itself. It'll pay for itself, so that kind of work really counts. We're about to undertake a similar operations review in the school department to see where we can tighten up there as well. So this commitment to honest self-assessment is something that will serve us well in the long run. We just have to be committed to it, and we take it very seriously. And the last point I'll just make about the overall approach is we need to continue working together on this. The dialogue between the council and the administration has gotten better over the years, and I, for one, appreciate that, and I know that you do as well. But we need to redouble our commitment to solving our financial challenges. So my financial team, of course, led by Ari, will be available to answer everybody's questions as we go through the budget in the next few weeks, and I just encourage everybody, call me if you have a question, call me if you have a concern, just call me. We just need to continue to have all the information available in front of us so that we can make the best decisions on the public's behalf. So let me conclude with a couple of things. So if you heard the speech and you just happened into New Bedford, you'd say, jeez, you know, things must be hurting, and that's hardly the case. People, not only are we seeing that New Bedford is progressing, that it is improving along multiple fronts, but others are saying it too, others from very far away. The city's reputation is really coming around. That's important, but what's more important is the way our citizens, our residents, feel about our city, and that is improving as well. And we've seen, you know, we've seen it in when it comes to employment. We've added roughly 5,000 jobs in the last few years. The city's bond rating is the highest in its history. We're repairing things, there are new parks, things like the Cove Walk and the Harbor Walk. and the Harbor Walk, these are all things that add to the city's quality of life, and people are noticing, and we've done that together, the council and my administration. So I am highly optimistic about the city's prospects, but I would not be doing my job if I didn't express my concern about the city's finances, especially given, given all the progress. It would be easy just to gloss over it, but we can't do that. We have to state what we believe is necessary with clarity and what we need to do together to make it happen. The key for us is to understand that the rebuilding of our city is taking shape. Together, we're making the right moves, but it takes time to build a city, and we have to be disciplined about certain things, especially when it comes to money. And, but we are on a healthier, more sustainable path that will lead us, especially when you take a look at what's going on in other cities, cities roughly our size, we are, we're making the right moves, and in the long run, it will pay off, but it's, sometimes those decisions aren't easy. I appreciate your commitment to doing everything we can to make every last dollar, every last taxpayer dollar, go as far as it can in the city, and to make what we offer in the way of services better all the time. So I thank you for your consideration, again, I thank you for your patience in waiting for me to arrive, and I look forward to our work together in the next few weeks.
Are you going to distribute something now? That's okay, Ladd, we'll go through the agenda, and that would be wonderful. Okay, thank you. Colleagues, you've heard the address from the mayor, and so now before, as we have items two through eight, I'll ask the clerk if there's no objection to read all of them together, and then we can refer them to the quasi-committee on the whole. Any objection on taking two through eight together?
No objection.
Very good.
Madam President, item two is an order appropriating $319,630,090 from ordinary revenue and municipal receipts of fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, for payment of current expenses of various municipal departments. Item three is an order appropriating $979,267 in 12 equal monthly increments from airport receipts of FY '19 in the airport budget. Item four is an order appropriating $23,277,200 in 12 equal monthly increments from wastewater receipts of FY '19 in the DPI wastewater budget. Item five is an order appropriating $15,336,628 in 12 equal monthly increments from water receipts of FY '19 in the DPI water budget. Item six, Madam President, is an order appropriating $878,341 in 12 equal monthly increments from the enterprise fund receipts of FY '19 in the downtown parking account. Item seven is an order appropriating $102,000 in 12 equal monthly increments from municipal receipts of FY '19 in the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Fund. And item eight, Madam President, is an order appropriating $30,996 now staying to the credit of the account of CCDA Traffic Handicap Parking as follows: $25,996 to commission for citizens with disabilities charges and services, and $5,000 to commission for citizens with disabilities to capital outlay.
Thank you, Clerk Farias. Motion before us would be to refer items two through eight to the quasi-committee on the whole.
So move.
Made by Council Gomes, second by Council Carney. Any discussion on any of the items before us? All those in favor of referring to the quasi-committee on the whole say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Colleagues, there's no further business before us tonight. Motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
So move.
Made by Council Gomes, second by Council Carney. Any discussion on adjournment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We are adjourned at 8:22 PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming and joining us tonight.[1763.64][1763.64][music]